Here, that's out in the audience tonight. Called meeting tour, is there any conflict of interest amongst council members here tonight? Seeing none, we have regrets from councillor Hoffman. She won't be here, our junior councillor, so... We're going to go right into the adoption of the published agenda. Can I have a mover, please? Councillor Bjorkman and councillor Bowman, all in favour? It's carried.
Item 5, adoption of minutes, 5.1, that the minutes of the October 21st regular council meeting be adopted as circulated.
Mover, please. Deputy Mayor Millage and councillor Verbeek, all in favour? It's carried.
And 5.2, that the minutes of the special council meeting of October 10th, 2019, be adopted as circulated.
Have a mover, please. Councillor Bjorkman and councillor Verbeek, all in favour? It's carried. Now, we're going to go right into public presentations, the Ontario Provincial Police, OPP. Before you come forward, Glenn, or who's ever coming up, I just want to inform council, this is not, I repeat, this is not about operations. Okay? So please, keep that to yourself, it's not about operations. So, Glenn, anytime you want to come up.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, we have before us Sergeant Peter Marshall, contract analyst and transition coordinator, Municipal Policing Bureau, and as well Inspector Glenn Miller of the Essex County Detachment of the Ontario Provincial Police.
Welcome, gentlemen. Anytime you're ready, you can start.
Okay, well, good evening, your worship, and members of council. As politely introduced by the mayor, my name is Sergeant Peter Marshall, and I work out of the Municipal Policing Bureau of the Ontario Provincial Police, sort of our general headquarters located in Arelia. And it was requested upon me to come down and speak to you in regards to just the billing model. It's been a very frequent presentation I've been doing this year, just given that most councils are relatively new as of last year. And it provides an opportunity just to get a little bit more of an informed idea of how municipalities are being billed by the OPP for the policing services that they are provided. So I put together a slideshow for you folks tonight, and so we'll go through. If you have any questions along the way, by all means, please let me know, but there will be an opportunity at the end to, so I can maybe answer a few of those questions that you may have as well. So what I will do is I'm going to start off with, as I'm not too sure how familiar you folks are with the billing model of the OPP, but just a little bit of a history, we'll get into the billing model, and then currently where the town of Essex sits in regards to the amounts of per property today compared to where they were, say, around 2014. So we'll get started with the next slide. Maybe. It's changing on my screen, but not on your screen.
Yeah, it's on that screen, yeah, it's on that channel.
Should change, you would think, right?
It should, yeah.
Let's go from the beginning.
It was just there.
I'll double check.
Yeah.
I think it might be on another screen, like, there's another...
Oh, okay.
I mean, that's my title page right there, but... There we go.
Is there something down there?
Maybe. Something changing here. Still stuck there. It's still going to this one?
Yeah. Which one did you hit, or page up with the arrows?
I was just using the arrows. But it's not working? No?
I'll try and run it through it by itself.
Just not staying, not going back there.
No, just pull it through. This is better.
Does that work? There we go. I think that's it. Do you need to see this? Well, this is good here, because, I mean, gives my next page what my speaking will trade there, so.
It's going to go through, is it all of it, the next slides?
It should, yeah. Should be. Try it. Sorry about that. So I think we're good to go here now. Okay, perfect. Okay, so just a brief history on the OPP billing model and sort of how it came to be. So as you're very well aware, municipalities across the province, they fall into one of two categories. You can have a Section 10 contract with what you folks currently enjoy writing out, or you can fall under Section 5.1, which is a non-contract. I will talk about this later on, but just to kind of get past that belief, there is no upper or lower tier policing when it comes to the OPP, whether you have a contract or not. Your policing service delivery is the exact same straight across the board. So what you receive under a contract is the same policing service delivery that you receive under a non-contract, and the billing is the exact same. There are some differences, we'll cover those differences off a little bit later, but the billing for the calls for service is the same straight across the board. However, so prior to 2014, the method for billing of these categories was different at that point in time. It was complicated, it was difficult to explain, it was based on many complicated measures. It also led to a wide disparity of policing costs throughout the province. Some municipalities are paying less than $50 per household or per property, and others are paying well over $800 per property. So in 2012, the Office of the Auditor General, who provides the oversight of administration over the province's finances, made recommendations to the OPP to make their billing more equitable and more transparent. Local municipalities were lobbying with AMO, which is the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, for the same thing. The previous billing model was at a date, complicated, and it needed attention. So the billing model is only applied to municipalities that were already being policed by the OPP as of January 1st, 2015, and that was the date that the billing model, the new billing model, was introduced. Some municipalities' costs went up in price and some went down in price. The implementation of the billing model did not change a total cost of policing, it simply reallocated the costs. So the billing model rationale, so it's based on the rationale that all OPP police municipalities should pay an equitable share for the provisions of policing services. No matter where the officers are located, either rural or urban, Northern Ontario or Southern Ontario, there's a cost to having a trained police officer available at any time of the day or night, and to respond to their needs 365 days out of the year. And there's a cost associated with availability regardless of how often police are required to attend. So this diagram depicts the development of the billing model with its deep roots in engagement sessions, consultations with ministries, agencies, associations, and of course, our municipalities. To my left, and I believe this is probably the best diagram that you can see of where that disparity that I spoke of earlier lies. So as I was saying before, prior to 2015, of when the billing model was introduced, in 2014, the method of billing at that point in time was essentially an FTE-based billing. So it was how many seats were being filled in each local detachment. And I know that's still a little bit of a hurdle to get over nowadays, a lot of municipalities, that they still have been around for a number of years. The expectation that municipalities are being billed by how many officers are in the detachment, how many hours that they're actually putting into their municipality as far as working in their platoons and whatnot, that is what we're talking about, it was sort of outdated and needed attention. So prior to 2015, you can see, I call it like a broom handle, essentially, the top you had your upper pricing of around $800 per property, and the lower being around 50. The purpose of the billing model, as I said before, was to make it more equitable, more transparent, and it was to streamline those costs for all municipalities across the province. And that's essentially what the billing model has done. And you can see how quickly that area disparity was brought together and allowed the billing model to become a lot more transparent and a lot more streamlined. In order to achieve that, though, we had to get the recommendations, the input from all of our stakeholders, that's both internal and external of the OPP. And essentially, that billing model, which is depicted as a tree above, the roots are down below, of how we went about putting this billing model together. And then reaching out, as I was saying before, it was through conferences, it's through webinars, billing summary reports, meetings, and of course, through our internet. It was all these stakeholders coming together that allowed us to put this success together. So as I previously stated to you folks, there is a cost associated to the delivery of policing services. So this slide here breaks down those costs into municipal policing resources and provincial specialised responsibilities. Through the municipal cost recovery, the OPP police municipalities are responsible to pay their equitable share as of for the 2020 numbers of $410 million, or approximately $410 million, that make up the total budget of the OPP as of 2019 of $1.17 billion. The remaining 64% is funded through the province, and the additional 1% through municipalities have recently chosen to be policed by the OPP and disbanding their local service. So the one that they misspelled probably closest to here that affected the OPP would have been the... Oh, the municipality of Wingham. And so with Wingham, they go on a separate contract each municipality has when they disband their service, so they don't fall underneath the billing model, just because there's a certain amount of data that we require to go on the billing model. And so that extra 1%, the municipality funds themselves until they fall into the billing model itself, about approximately three years later. So the billing model is provincially focused, it means it focuses on all of the municipal policing of the OPP that does in the province. We recover these costs from each municipality for services provided, and those costs are estimated in a prepared statement provided in the fall prior to the billing year, and then reconciled once the year of service is complete. So for example, for your 2020 billing, which your municipality would have received approximately four weeks ago, our municipalities will receive their statement in the fall of 2019. Reconciliation for certain billing components will be reconciled in the year 2021, when the year has been completed. So our model divides the majority of municipal policing costs into two categories. You have your base service costs and then your calls for service. The base service is how we achieve the equitable share for policing services. It's a per-property cost, and it's based on the number of properties within their boundaries, and this rate is same for all the OPP police municipalities. Now, our properties are based on MPAC numbers, so the OPP does not make these numbers up. We go on the most current numbers provided through MPAC. So the activity covered in the base costs includes legislative requirements, proactive policing, training, administration, and supervision. So that's essentially what allows that building to be there, everything to get that building up and running, put the officers in place, all the tools that are required for each officer to complete their daily tasks, and take it out and answer the calls for service. So the secondary, or the second category is the calls for service, which is specific to each municipality and is allocated based on their individual usage level. So a municipality that has more calls for service may pay more in this area than one with fewer calls for service. While base and calls for service are the two main categories in the billing, there are some additional costs that are recovered, and these costs may or may not be applicable to each municipality. For example, if a municipality provides facilities for the OPP to work from, they will not be billed accommodation costs or cleaning costs. However, if the OPP are policing a municipality from their provincial detachment, then the municipality will be charged a fee for the accommodation and cleaning costs. Another example would be court security. If you're a municipality that has a courthouse within their municipality, then you'd be responsible for covering the court security costs. But we'll speak to a little bit more of those costs a little later in the presentation. So earlier I had mentioned that our costs are estimated in the fall, and statements are delivered for the upcoming year. So I'd like to share with you how we accomplish this. So with the data from our active reporting system, so the OPP uses what's called a daily activity report, and each officer at the end of each of their day of their shift, they have to enter in everything they did during the course of that day. So that's all the calls for service that they attended to, any proactive policing, that sort of thing, and how much time they spent doing each one. So an officer's daily activity report could range from, there could be five items, it could be 15 or 20 items on that list. But that is where we draw all of our time from when it comes to the billing aspect. And so both uniformed and civilian are responsible for doing this, and as a result of providing the service to our municipalities from our frontline detachments. So this is calculated by the number of hours worked in municipal areas of the OPP, and this excludes any provincial work that the OPP is mandated to provide. So your municipal billing covers off any municipal work, it does not cover off the provincial component of that. So the cost of these employees is then determined by a weighted average salary for each rank and civilian role. For the support staff and other direct operating expenses, a fee per uniform, FTEs applied, and multiplied by the provincial municipal number of uniformed FTEs. And the provincial component is removed from this total as well. And how we achieve these numbers, so we do get a lot of comments saying, okay, well, how do we account for officers that are off on sick leave, or they could be off on maternity or vacation, you know, we're paying for officers that are not completing their works. So as I say, it's based on the calls for service, it's not based on the officer actually being present within that detachment. However, we do, our Bureau, the Municipal Policing Bureau, we do receive monthly updates from each detachment on how many officers were off and how many were working. This is how you're putting together a provincial average of the uniformed FTEs and civilian FTEs that were working over the course of the year. So it's not so much how many, like, an actual person, it's based on an allotment of, or an average number of the officers working. So these numbers are tallied together to establish a local provincial average, and the provincial component is then removed, resulting in the provincial municipal number of uniformed FTEs. The ODOE is then applied, which is the other direct operating expenses, that's the ODOE, to the total resulting in the billing figure. Once these calculations are added up, this gives us the amount of money we estimate to recover from the municipalities based on previous activities. So for 2019, we calculated that we'd recover approximately $372 million for municipal policing. To split this value into the categories of base and calls for service, we determine using the data entered by our members in their daily activity reporting system, how much time is spent on base activities, and how much time is spent on calls for service. So that's what I was saying, like, as the officer at the end of their shift enters in their tasks that were completed over the course of the day, there could be proactive policing in there, for an example, and so that's going to fall underneath your base costs. But then there could be a call for an assault or a break, and then they're not going to be your calls for service. So that's how they end up splitting that amount of $372 million. And so for 2019, the split is 56.2% for the base services and 43.8% for the calls for service. We apply the split to this amount. So with the model, we recover 56.2 through the base, which amounts to $216 million. To determine the base cost per property, we simply divide this amount by the total amount of properties out of all of our municipalities across the province. So for 2019, it was $189.54. That base amount that you're paying in your billing statement is exactly the same amount as what Hoxbury would be paying for their base amount. Every municipality pays the exact same dollar figure for the base amount of service. Where the numbers start to separate or makes your municipality unique from the next one is based on your calls for service. And then any additional costs that we were speaking to before, where, you know, you could be an enhancement as a result of having a contract, could be overtime, could be court costs, that sort of thing, accommodation, cleaning costs. So that's where those differences lie. But for the base cost, every municipality pays the same across the province. So the remaining 43.8% will recover through the calls for service. So to rephrase, for 2019, we're covering $156 million through calls for service. So now, just to go back to the base services for a minute, and I'll show you how that appear on your billing statement. So the base service covers, as I said before, it's the existence of your police officers, the legislative proactive duties that they perform, and the training they require, and it's based on the number of properties sourced, as I said before, through municipal properties and Assessment Corporation or MPAC, which is updated annually as we receive those new numbers. Now, this is a fictitious billing statement, it doesn't reflect any municipality across the province, but the first portion deals with base billing. It lists the property counts provided to us by MPAC, and it shows the total base cost to the municipalities. Now, for the calls for service category, the call service cost represents the municipal cost related to policing services that are typically reactive in nature. So this is where an officer has to go out and commence or look into whether an investigation is required or not. And at this point, the municipality pays a proportionate share of the total cost for municipal calls calculated for the province. So we stated that we recover $156 million, or approximately, through calls for service, so the price tag for all municipal calls for service is $156 million. Each municipality's four years of reactive calls for service are included, and an average is determined in column A. So the billing model is based on averages, and it's based on a four-year average, and this is how we're able to achieve that equitable and consistent per-properity cost over the last five years, four to five years now. So we chose to go with a four-year average as opposed to calls in a single year to help mitigate any extreme fluctuations in the calls, so either up or down that occur in any given year. So you may have a year, it's a great year, calls for service were down, just very typical calls, and then the next year comes along and you've got two or three major incidents that go on, so you'll see that spike, almost looks like a cardiogram essentially, right? Or you're trying to maintain a budget, you seem to maintain the budget this year, actually maybe it will come in because the calls for service were down, and also the next year just skyrockets right up. And so it's tough for a municipality to gauge where their budgets lie, or if the billing model, by doing the average, it tends to level all that out. And we saw that earlier in that diagram I call the broom handle, since 2015, it's been very steady. And we're going to see that trend just in a few slides ahead here, of sort of the success that the billing model has achieved. So some calls for service can take longer to deal with than others. We've grouped our reactive calls for service into nine groups, and those nine groups are provided to you above. So each working group has a time standard that represents the average time to require to deal with these types of calls from start to finish. The time standards are reflected in column B, and these standards are determined from our daily activity reporting system and are updated annually. So again, as I said before, it's that daily activity report, or that DAR, that we draw all of these numbers out, and we're able to achieve these average numbers, our hours of work, and these time standards. Now, if you were to go into your billing, the actual billing statement for the municipality, you'll see these groups broken down into all the categories below that are included in each category. However, these ones here, by looping them into the same group, we achieve a better weighted time for the calls for service. So the average number of calls for service then multiplied by the time standard to determine total weighted time as shown in column C. The municipality's percentage of weighted hours is calculated from the total weighted time of all municipalities. So these time standards are achieved through every, through all the information that's provided by every OPP member across the province, and that's uniformed and civilian. So then essentially it forms a big piece of the pie, and then where your percentage comes out, then that's extracted from that pie, and that's your percentage of the total. So if we go back to the sample statement, the next one reflects the calls for service and the municipality's percentage of all municipal workload. So to calculate the cost per property, we simply divide the $781,000 by the number of properties in your municipality. Sorry, there's a slide there, my mistake. I thought you clicked it there. So, yeah, so going back, so just to calculate the cost per property, divide the $781,000 by the numbers of properties in your municipality, and that achieves the costs. So for the base and calls for service cost from 2015 to 2019, so this slide is showing the last five years of our billing model. The amount recovered through the base services is represented in blue, the base service cost per property for each year by the black line, and the amount recovered from calls for services are in the green. So overall, the model's proven to be quite stable over the past five years. So overall, the model's proven to be quite stable over the past five years. So this reflects my comment that I made earlier in regards to streamlining the and making the billing for each municipality a little more transparent, a little more equitable for everybody across the province. So the additional cost components, and this is again what makes up the differences between your municipality and your neighboring municipality. So we talked earlier about the additional costs, there are actually five areas, I've listed three here. So there are examples of overtime costs. You have court security and your prisoner transport as well. So municipalities are billed for overtime resulting, just used as the example, from resulting from the occurrences in their geographic area. So an average from previous years is used as an estimate. Overtime recovery is limited to municipal detachment staff and not our investigative specialists from region and general headquarters. Those folks are covered underneath the provincial components. So if you had canine come down for a dog track, if you had our criminal investigations branch has come down for a homicide investigation, the municipalities are not on the hook for paying for those amounts. They're paid, you're responsible for the immediate detachment strength that are required for that specific call for service and anything that results of that particular officer or officers. So at the end of the billing period, this will be reconciled with the actual overtime costs. Court security is based on the cost of the staff in the detachment area required to provide designated court security activities. So in 2019 are based on 2017 activity and would be reconciled to the actual at the end of the billing period. Prisoner transport costs are allocated to municipalities on a per-property basis. It represents the cost of staffing, providing prisoner transport services across the province. And the standard per-property cost has been calculated based on 2017 activities at $2.27 a property. These costs will be reconciled to the actual 2019 costs at the end of billing period. The other two components that are listed here are accommodations, cleaning costs, and enhancements. So as I said before, the accommodation cleaning, you are provided to cover a portion of that cost if you happen to have a your municipality working out of a provincial detachment that you're not providing that facility to. And then the enhancements are the extra personnel that you may choose to hire for the duration of the contract. They're optional and they're not required, obviously. So if we go back to our billing statement, the additional cost components appear at the bottom of the part of the bill. In this example, has been provided all the components that have been billed for. So again, it's based on a per-property costs. So keep in mind that while some components like prisoner transport and accommodations are per-property rates at $2.27, $2.27 and $4.90, these other costs per property have been calculated by dividing the total costs for the line items by the number of properties. We simply do this to determine the cost per property. So look at these numbers that we've been speaking to in regards to the total recovery or cost recovery numbers. So the base cost is the most expensive at 200, now these are 2020 costs, 2020 numbers, sorry. $210 or $210.8 million. And that's based on $189.54 per property in 2019. Calls for service at a cost recovery of 162.1 million. Other direct costs, and these are your prisoner transport, your overtime, at 38.8 million. Providing the 2020 numbers of 411.7 million dollars of cost recovery. So move on to historical trends from 2014 to 2019. Again, this goes back to my comments I made earlier in regards to the stability of the billing model. So the slide shows the total amount of money recovered each year from municipalities in the blue and what the average cost per property has been for each year. The average cost for property over the last five years has remained relatively stable and varying between $350 and $360 per property. So it's a long way since 2014 when you were ranging from $50 to $800 per property across the province. So these are the averages for every municipality across the province. Now, just included just a little bit of a breakdown of the, all those different categories that I spoke to. I won't go over this in detail, I think we've covered this one off. But sometimes it's just nice to see all those broken down. And this is where you folks fit into the whole presentation. So what I've done is I've gone from 2014. So what I did for 2014 is I used actually 2015 numbers, just because that's how the billing model works. But to give you an idea of where you sat for 2014 and compared to what our provincial average is. So in 2014, you were at $463 per property, and it dropped down to 408 in 2015. And mind you, we had a cap put in place at that time as well for a municipality that came down or that went up in costs. But there's a steady decline right down to 2017, and then came up a little bit for 2018, and then back down a dollar per property for 2019. So again, it shows a stability for your municipality, not just right across the province, but for yours in particular, of where you've seen or been able to enjoy that price drop per property since 2014, and then are now seeing that stability which the billing model was designed to provide to each municipality. So as I was saying, for 2014, I applied that data for 2015 data to 2014. And as I said before, the property counts are based on the MPAK numbers of council household. And keeping in mind that in 2014, the billing was based on FTEs and not by way of the billing model. And that's my presentation, in a nutshell.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Questions from council? Any questions from council at all? Go ahead, Councilor Verby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you both for coming. It's very much appreciated. My question is about the contract enhancement role or constable enhancement role. I just, so when was added to the contract? Our past council had adopted the contract. And then this position was added on, was supported by council at the recommendation of the Police Service Board that I was at the time serving on. At the time, the idea was, what we understood the intent of the role was for the officer to sort of serve as a point person for the community and like a contact, a frontline person. We were told things like it could possibly save calls to service because they'd be more accessible to the community. And so I guess my question is, and also like we were, as part of it, we were to receive from this specific constable, you know, their reports and their updates, and we were getting them monthly. And I guess those have stopped since Officer Coulter retired, I believe, April 2018, something like that. And we've had several have filled the role. I'm not even sure who's filling the role right now. And I'm just wondering if there's an idea to go back to that where that is a specific go-to person for the community. I'm just wondering.
Thank you, Councilor.
Much your worship and much for the question. Actually, that was one of the specific areas that I was going to be covering when I provide a strategic overview for you. Actually, but I will speak when Constable Coulter did retire. We did immediately put in place an individual. That particular individual has remained fairly constant. What the community has seen is that it is at a higher level of which you're not paying for. We've also put in at a staff sergeant level that just strategically happens to be located in the town of Essex. It provides to us a good overview of certainly what's taking place. The role certainly of a contract sergeant is exactly what you said. It provides a level of continuity and consistency with your particular policing contract. And it also does have an individual that has constant overlook and oversight as to what specifically is taking place within your particular area. What you've seen when we do presentations at our Police Service Board, we provide a very enhanced level of reporting, unlike probably most areas in the province, I would dare say. You're allowed to see a comparison. We incorporate a lot of that as to what is going on. And from what the contract enhanced sergeant position does see, we feed that into our particular reports. I can say that by having that type of consistency and continuity, it allows for you, and currently, we've just gone through a change, and currently, our new interim contract sergeant is Sergeant Byron Horneck, who's actually seated in the audience here today. And you'll have a chance, certainly, I know the Police Service Board of meeting him, and I know some of the executives with council has as well. So what does that provide for your particular county? Does it, or for your town, does it cost money? Absolutely, it does. Does it yield results? I can tell you certainly from my chair, I certainly believe that it does. Anybody is entitled to talk to a supervisor with the OPP. Where the difference lies is when you have an enhanced sergeant in that particular position, they're the individual that the members of the community would reach out to or various department heads, or just members of the community as such, they become very well-known. When they make a decision, they make a decision based on the best information that's available to them at that particular time. We don't task that particular sergeant with additional responsibilities outside of the town of Essex, where when we don't have a contract sergeant in place, you would be able to speak to a supervisor or somebody at a higher level if you wish. But that depends, of course, upon the various calls for service that those individuals are overseeing at that particular time. It doesn't become their priority. Their priority is constant oversight of some of the serious calls that they have to respond to. And what takes place if you're dealing with multiple people, then based on the information that's provided at that particular time, the individual may make a decision that may not be consistent with other individuals. While it's always going to be consistent with our policy and in the framework of the law, the immediacy of having that immediate access to talk to that person could be delayed by 10 minutes, it could be delayed by 20 minutes, depending on what that other individual is doing. So they maintain the detachment at a constant state of operational readiness in the event of whatever situation was to go and happen. As I mentioned, it certainly does cost money, and we certainly understand that. That's why it's strictly a business decision. But when I have a look at your particular contract and I see the level of safety within your community in comparison to all other communities, and I'm not just talking all other communities within Essex, I'm talking all other communities, not only within Ontario, but across Canada. The town of Essex continues to rate in the highest of the percentiles of safe communities. I don't think that's any coincidence that the individuals that helped to make that particular decision in having that particular person didn't see the value in that. And I know that we certainly see the value, I believe the residents see the value in that as well. And that's why that particular individual, you're free to ask that person whatever type of question that you possibly can, and a lot of the situations that they deal with, they're able to really quickly mitigate something that often would prevent there being a call for service, right? They get the facts, they make a decision, and they're able to provide a remedy to that. Where in some other instances, it becomes a call for service, and that's where things get very, very expensive. We see our contract sergeants out within the community, educating the public, explaining different things that are going on. Being that voice of reason, we hope, in most particular cases, we realize that we don't have a crystal ball when we do policing anywhere. But they're looking at the data, we're an analytically different detachment, so we have lots of data that we can rely upon. And that particular individual ensures that there's an immediate response to those calls for service of which the OPP is asked to provide a response to. So I'm sorry, the answer is perhaps a little bit longer than you wanted. I can wrap up some of this when I do have my opportunity to kind of speak at a more strategic level.
Any other questions? Any questions on the billing, Councilor Bjorkman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming to see us tonight and explain us. I read through it, and I have to admit, a couple of times I had to start over again and remember where I was because it's not a really good read, but it's important. One of the things I was looking at as far as calls for service and the costs of travel, gas, cars, the works, we've got a fairly large municipality. We've got four distinct centers in it. And we've had different areas where officers were located, and then we were moving officers. We're wondering if they're traveling back and forth from Harrow to Essex. So just in the cost structure, if they have to travel extra, in our town, we've got greater distances to go or where they're going to meet, start their shift, end their shift, is there something into that that increases the cost to us? Or is that part of just the cost of policing and not necessarily a call for service charge?
Well, going back to, you're speaking like, you know, having the officer there, the cars, the gasoline. So there's two components to the billing model, right? There's the base costs, which essentially, that gets all the men and women out there to do their job, gets them in the detachment, gets the detachment there, all the supplies and whatnot, right? So there's all those costs covered underneath the base cost of the billing model. When it comes to the calls for service, like I said, that's for each individual call for service that officer has responded to. So what happens in between then, right? So if he's traveling or she's traveling from point A to point B, it's how there's going to score their daily activity report, right? Because in between that time, they could be at the detachment, and they could be kitting up or getting all of their equipment on ready to go. And they may have a call for service getting dispatched to wherever the address is, right? So that call for service starts at the point of when they get dispatched to that call for service. So when that call comes into our provincial communication center, and it goes to the call taker, to our dispatcher, they've created an incident for that, and they've got the timestamp going. As soon as that call is dispatched to the officer, that's when their call for service begins, right? So I can't, I couldn't fairly give you an answer on, well, what are they doing during this time or that time? Because I wouldn't know, right? It depends on how they're scoring their daily activity report. But what I can say is, what we do is based on how they score it. So if they're answering a call for service, and it's one that falls underneath the billable calls for service, then that's extracted, and then it's applied to where you fit in the provincial total of your percentage. If it falls underneath a base cost for service, so something proactive, something that falls underneath, say, the Liquor License Act or whatever the case may be, then that's all covered underneath the base costs, right? So that's where the difference lies. But as far as, you know, them traveling here or there, if they're not answering a call for service, then you're not going to be billed for a call for service, right? So it depends on how they're scoring their daily active report.
Thank you, just further that, yeah, that's one of the questions that was out there, and probably we'll look at that more when we have more of our report to us, was that if we're basing people in one center versus another center, and where are the calls coming from? Where is the travel coming from? Is that increasing the cost of our policing? So it's one of the questions that's been put forward by our residents, and we'll follow up with that when we're looking more.
But keep in mind, though, that those calls too are averaged. So because an officer takes half an hour at a specific call for service, and maybe that includes, you know, three or four minutes travel time, for example, right? That is then built into the average over the call for service for that year underneath that workload category, right? that workload category, right? So, so again, that alleviates those spikes up and down as well. It tends to make it a little more equitable.
Okay. And just to your point, sir, about as safe as our community is, there's, we are certainly happy with where we rate on the scale as far as safety and the way that we're taken care of here. So it's, I'm happy to have you come out and explain to us what's going on, but we're certainly happy with where our policing has gotten us. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Councillor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. In terms of increasing calls for service, if we start to see a rise in increase of calls, does that correlate to a decrease in proactive policing? Or does it mean that we're going to see more officers come in? Or does it mean that we're going to have an increased overtime? Because if we have such and such amount of officers on site, we can only do so many things with those officers. So if we see more calls, does it equal overtime, more people power, or a decrease in proactive policing?
Well, there's a lot of measures when you group all those together. So if you have a spike in a specific, or a specific amount of calls, we are based on, we have like closest to the call, for example, right? So you've got your detachment itself, so you've got the members that are dedicated to your specific zone. So let's just say the town of Essex. I'm not too sure exactly how the zoning is split up, but just for argument's sake, town of Essex is a zone. And you have some calls for service in there, and you have a specific amount of officers working that day, but you have more calls that are required to be answered. So then the communication center, what they do is that it's through GPS, they have closest to the call, they can start looking at where all the closest officers are in the surrounding area, and start dispatching those folks to those calls. They'll come and answer that call, they'll score their daily activity report accordingly, and they'll go back to their home location if they happen to be out of that specific zone. When it comes to overtime, that's all call-specific. So it doesn't have to do anything to do with how many calls are coming in all at once. You could have that call where you've got, you know, your 90-year-old grandmother who's had a break and enter while she was sleeping, and her house is trashed, and so you're going to take the time to conduct, just like any other investigation, but conduct it appropriately. But there could be a set of circumstances surrounding all of that that may lead the officer into overtime, right? Because it could, that call may have come in at the end of the day, an hour and a half before he or she was to end their shift, but to continue that call, operationally, it made sense to keep that officer there, then that would have to be justified. Keeping in mind that any overtime that an officer in the OPP participates in has to come through approval first. So that constable has to have the approval through their sergeant, who may have to go to their staff sergeant to allow for that overtime. Because we do make sure that we try to keep that overtime down to a very minimum, just for the municipalities themselves. And are there other ways of getting around that? So, I mean, there's a lot of different variables when it comes to the question that you asked, it's a very common question that you've asked. It's just strategically going about the best way to handle that specific call for service or that increase in workload during the course of the day. And just the technology that we have available to us now, it's, the options are, I'm not going to say limitless, but there are a lot more, options a lot more available now than they were, say, 15, 20 years ago. So I don't know if I answered your question, but we do take those measures to make sure we address those calls, and they're not going, because they don't go unanswered. We will answer the call for service, but, and making sure that they're billed appropriately.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other councillor, Darren?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to tickets and fines, how does that affect billing? Like, where does revenue from tickets and fines go? How does municipality, do we share in that?
Well, it's how, I guess it's how you've got yourself set up. Like, so the tickets and fines are not built into your bill itself. I think it's through the PSV, I believe it's set up that way as far as if you're...
Yeah, actually, all the tickets, there is a formula, and it has to do with all the police agencies that are involved, and there's a formula that allows you to get a certain percentage based on the number of enforcement tickets that we lay. We don't control any of that. That is not a formula that we came up with. It's a formula that's agreed upon by all the municipalities within Essex County.
Councillor Van Enden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, there were a couple of charts that you showed up there that weren't part of our package. Is there any way those could be forwarded to us?
Yeah, no, I believe the presentation you had there was just one off our, the one that I had sent Rob there earlier, just a few links that I had, just for reference sake. So that wasn't the presentation that I provided, it's just a generic one that we have on our website. But absolutely, I can provide those to you there at a later date.
Thank you. And a second question is, you know here in the report that the largest single cost increase was for vehicles. And I'm asking this question partially because I'm a car guy, and partially because a lot of our residents work in the industry. But the venerable, you point out that the Crown Victoria is going away, and you've got a lot more SUVs, and you sort of intimate that they're a lot more expensive to repair, and that the ratio of use of SUVs has risen. Why are we using more SUVs now? And why are they more expensive to repair?
You'd have to maybe forward that question to me, because I would have to go through fleet, because we don't have any decision-making on what they use for vehicles and what they don't use for vehicles. And as far as what's effective and what's not effective, each vehicle is designed for specific purposes, and it would just depend on what they're being utilized for, so. But unfortunately, it's not one that falls under our kind of line of work as far as why, the rationale behind the vehicles. But I'm more than happy to look into that. If you want to just forward that through even Lynn or Rob, then I can look into that and get an answer back to you.
Thanks.
That makes sense?
Yes, thanks very much.
Okay.
If I may, just caution the council a little bit. When we're asking questions, let's not make sure it doesn't get into operations. So let's, you know, I think we're getting a little bit off, a little bit off, a little bit here. Councillor Bowman?
Just a quick comment. I know when the new billing system was coming forward and was being proposed, a lot of discussion went on, and there was a lot of fear how it was going to work out. We thought it was just, or a lot of people thought it was a move to increase the income coming in, but we looked at ours and the original formulas, and we sort of looked at, we thought we would come out okay on it, and as it's turned out, I think we have come out fairly well. The positive is, it's a much more definite formula that you can look and get some feedback on it, because you have your basic cost plus your calls for service. And those are probably the two things that make it work from a municipal standpoint. You can see where the costs are, so. Overall, I think it's been good for us. I'm sure if you're in a municipality where your costs went way up, it wasn't. And if you're in a municipality where it went way down, it was good. So there's always winners and losers, but I think overall, it's a fairer system.
Thank you, councillor. Anybody else?
Okay, I want to thank you very much, Sergeant Marshall, for your presentation. I think Len is next.
Great, well, thank you very much, your worship, deputy mayor, members of council, department heads, and ladies and gentlemen. As you know, the Ontario Provincial Police is one of the largest deployed police services in North America, and it proudly serves over 14 million Ontarians with over 8,000 members and 1,000 auxiliary members. Our members provide community-based policing in 325 of Ontario's 444 municipalities, while patrolling more than 1 million square miles. As Ontario's police service of jurisdiction, the Ontario Provincial Police continues to lead the province-wide initiatives that counter the exploitation of children, vulnerable persons, human trafficking, disrupt organized crime, deal with the opioid crisis that is impacting all segments of society and communities across Canada, and respond to an increasing number of calls involving people that are impacted with various mental health care issues. Our operating platform in the town of Essex is one of an integrated model that permits us to deploy our assets throughout your community to meet the ever-changing environment and societal issues that we deal with. People not familiar with the OPP see our police service patrolling our highways, trails, and waterways. However, that is only a small portion of what we do. The majority of OPP officers assigned to the town of Essex contract have performed municipal duties throughout the province in various jurisdictions, and bring with them a wealth of experience and diversified skills. Essex County detachment with our town of Essex contract remains the busiest and the largest out of 162 detachments in the province. We are a mission-driven detachment, and are recognized as being progressive, innovative, and proactive in our approach in keeping our communities safe. Adaptability and flexibility is a core function, as often multiple calls for service can occur at the same time within the town of Essex. While we don't discuss how many officers we have working at any one time for purposes of officer safety, there has never been a time where there's been a call made to the OPP that has not been responded to in a timely manner. Our OPP members are in a constant state of motion, and I can assure you, well, that we always have officers on duty to respond to a call for service or those emergent in nature. A missing child, a serious motor vehicle collision, or a crime in progress, all of which were responded to and often by several responding units, depending on the seriousness of the call for service. Our officers, as you know, carry Noxloin, which is a medication used in opioid overdoses. Across the province, the OPP have saved the lives of over 100 people, and this includes individuals within Essex County and within your contract who have overdosed and were near death. The implementation, as Sergeant Marshall was talking about, of the closest to the call harnesses our existing GPS technology along with our computer-aided dispatch systems to ensure that those priority-based calls are actioned by whatever OPP vehicle happens to be in the area and closest to the call. Our responding officers can be from our neighboring detachments within Essex County or our bordering detachments, who are often within the town of Essex, working on an investigation specific to the town of Essex. In the town of Essex and throughout Essex County OPP, we are victim-focused, intelligence-led, problem-oriented, and evidence-based. We focus on violent crime, property crime, illicit drugs, and yes, this includes opioids, cyber-related crime, traffic issues, mental health, and the reduction of pocket 911 dials and false alarms, all of which require a priority response. Sexual violence and harassment, youth at risk, human trafficking, drug and substance abuse, and of course, traffic remain our focus. The cornerstone of our strategy to deal with all of these issues is the development of a community safety and well-being plan that is a responsibility of the municipality, with the police certainly being one of the key partners. The shift that safety is primarily the responsibility of the police is now everyone's responsibility, and these plans must be submitted to the government by January 2021. We will continue to focus on collaborative partnerships that not only include the police, but other partners such as education, healthcare, and social services, working together to make our communities safe. In developing an integrated approach, it recognizes that proactive, community-focused partnerships produce results at a lower cost to the taxpayer. Today, the public continues to call the police for non-police-related events. We want to reduce the demand for reactive, resource-intensive emergency response by developing a collaborative and a proactive approach, where community partners share information and we work together. This will help to prevent crime and improve outcomes for local residents by ensuring that everyone receives the right response at the right time and by the right responders. It may sound difficult, but it's really not, for we have been doing this for years. And I only have to look at our provincially-recognized mental health response unit, Project Safe TRID, our focus on youth through guide, advocate, and protect, our efforts in dealing with sexual violence against women through best empower, support together. You have heard me speak in the media of human trafficking. And our detachment has been a leading agency in proactively addressing what is a national concern. Everyone is familiar with the Lock it or Lose It campaign that is designed to protect the contents of vehicles from thefts. Project Safeguard, which helps to lock out criminals out of your homes and businesses. OPP Positive Ticketing Program, where we see our youth doing random acts of kindness and exhibiting positive behavior. Perhaps you've heard of our Crime Prevention through Environmental Design, whereby our officers can provide support to those individuals within your community who have been impacted by residential and business break-ins. Our Local Crime Stopper Program, which we provide an OPP member to, is valuable to our overall success in solving crime and reporting instances such as impaired driving, driving while under suspension, or operating a motor vehicle without insurance or a license. I'm going to be a little bit repetitive, just based on Councillor Verbeek's question, but please allow me to do so, because it addresses, once again, the enhanced sergeant position. The town of Essex has what is an enhanced sergeant position within your contract. Having a single point of contact and overall continuity of operations is important, and I'm going to tell you why. Well, a member of the public can always speak to a supervisor, their priority is to effectively manage the significant call volume within your town. Without a dedicated sergeant, the consistency in decision-making may be lost, as the town would then be dealing with numerous supervisors occasionally about the same issue, which does not lend itself to an overall understanding of the issue. I don't encumber your sergeant with other issues occurring within Essex County, as their focus is your town, in ensuring that they maintain situational awareness to everything that is going on. Does it cost money? Yes, it does. However, when I look at the fact that the town of Essex is rated in the top percentile of safest communities in Canada, I believe that this speaks to the success along with us allowing to build with you a safe community, one that is committed to public safety, delivering proactive and innovative policing. The town of Essex is an excellent example of that. I often hear from some people, often through social media, that they don't see the police. If you don't see a police officer in the town of Essex, I can tell you what they're doing. Our officers are present 24/7, often with a victim of a crime, dealing with an individual that has been impacted by a mental illness who is struggling to get through each day, investigating a serious crime such as a sexual assault, many of which occurred years ago, however, are now being reported to the police for the first time, or arresting a violent offender within your community. We deal with missing persons and have significant expertise to conduct searches for those individuals who are vulnerable for several reasons. Much of what we do is not in the media, for we respect the privacy of our residents and despite comments from some that think the OPP do little. We're conducting focused patrol within your community, which deals with those anticipated crimes that could or may happen. Our officers are in your schools, they're in your retirement facilities, in your businesses, speaking to numerous groups on issues that range from cyber-related crime issues, which impacts everyone, to elder abuse, and yes, the complexities of the new cannabis legislation. And this is just to name a few. There is not a time when we are not busy, for we enforce numerous statutes, both provincially and federally. And as I have told you, we respond to all calls generated through our communication center. When I hear that the OPP never showed up, all I have to do is check our computer system. When I hear that the OPP never showed up, all I have to do is check our computer system and unfortunately, in most instances, if not all, we were never notified. Waiting days to report an incident does not lend itself to crime prevention for being aware when the activity of a person is suspicious often leads to a crime being prevented. For those that often report the same vehicle speeding or illegally parked, please know that we do take enforcement action, but issuing a ticket often does not always deter those individuals who will continue to break the law and we don't control the outcome of the case once it goes to court. Not all of our officers are readily identifiable as police for we operate several specialized units within your town, all of which are fully leveraged by our frontline officers serving your community. While you may not see us, in many cases, we see you. We have the capacity within Essex County to mobilize significant resources, and we do, into the Town of Essex when we're required to do so. There's a reason why people and companies enjoy being part of your amazing community, that being the Town of Essex, and I suspect that community safety is one of the top reasons.
Thank you, Inspector. Any questions from council at all? No questions? I want to... Are we going to have our contract manager introduced in front of us here, if we could?
Yeah, no, I said that, well, thank you very much, your worship and members of council. So, in fairness to Sergeant Byron Hornick, when I met with him this evening, he asked me what exactly would he like for me to do and I said, just actually sit back and enjoy the moment because things will get very busy for you, but if Sergeant Hornick wouldn't mind maybe just standing?
All he has to do is stand and we just want to thank him and bring him on board.
There you go.
Thanks a lot for the presentation.
Thank you, your worship, members of council.
Have a motion and move to Counselor Bjorkman and Counselor Verbeek. Any questions? All in favor? Carrie.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Item eight on the agenda tonight is reports from administration. 8.1, Community Services 2019-39, re-2019 program updates from Recreation and Culture. That said report be received this evening.
Have a motion, Deputy Mayor Malash and need a seconder, Counselor Vanadola. Any questions? All in favor? Question, Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to perhaps Ms. Cynthia Cakebread, our manager of programming. Can you just elaborate a little bit more on some of the reasons for the cancellations of some of the Harrow programs? I do work at the library and we cancel programs as well and I understand that program quality is really important when you're trying to run a program. You know, it's not fun reading and singing books, storytime to like two kids, so I understand that, but I'm just, I'm wondering if there's select topics that are canceled more often than others and what can we do about it? Like, you know, as a counselor in my area, can I, you know, can we share more? Can we do more on Facebook? Like, what else can we do? Because I really want to keep going on with the increase in programs.
I think the answer is we don't know what trends more than others. Things get picked up better than others for some reason. We don't have any one area that cancels more than the other, so we'll have one art program that runs well, but none of the others get picked up. We have some activity programs that get picked up. We're watching kind of different trends that occur through the different programs that we run and continue to change and evolve. So, the question is, do we know why they don't run? Not really. Is there more we can do? Sure. We are sharing constantly on Facebook. We do handouts to the schools. We do our recreation guides to every household. We are available almost every hour of the day, almost. I get questions sometimes as late as 10 o'clock at night or 7 o'clock in the morning. There's been a lot of outreach through the website, coming in through the direct email that we pick up questions from there. We talk to our participants and ask them what they're enjoying, what they'd like to see more of, and then we also just watch the programs that do run well in certain areas or community centers and look for ways to transition them to the other community
Thank you. Just to follow up, the program, one of the programs that the people in Harrow really like, and I don't believe it was as well-attended as Colchester, is that like Senior Fit Program. So, if we could just throw it on our radar again, that if we can apply for a grant, I think the Health Centre did it, but people in Harrow, I've got asked twice now, which it's twice, right? Like, it's, people in Harrow want it back. There's a couple people that can't drive to Colchester, so that's why they're knocking on my door right now.
As far as I know, that community, as much as they were funded partially by us, but I think they also had internal funding issues. We spoke with them recently and they have an outreach program that was withdrawn as well, so it's duo. There was success with our community grant program to fund it, but they needed additional funding from internally.
Deputy Mayor Malash?
Thank you, through your worship. Every time this topic comes up, I just, I'm going to throw it out there and I'm going to give Cynthia, your department, a lot of credit. This is something that we've been asking for, started 10 years ago, saying we've got to do better with our programming and you guys are doing a phenomenal job at offering various types of programming, interesting. I've got a lot of compliments from different people from all over the community, all four wards, so keep it up. You guys are doing fantastic and I know that it's disappointing that we have to have some that are canceled from time to time, but if the people are just not there, not registering, it's nothing you can do about it. It's being offered. I think it's being advertised very well. People know about the programming and the selection is incredible compared to what it was 10 years ago, for sure. Thank you.
Counselor Verbeek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you Cynthia and team. I, for one, have always really appreciated the programs and have noticed the, you know, the growth and the variety that have been added. My question is a little bit like Counselor Bondi's, but it was because on the graphs that jumped out at me was that McGregor does seem to have, you know, significant amount of programs that are offered and then canceled more than other communities. And so, I myself, for as many years as it's been put out, grabbed that guide and go through it and see what works for a member of my family or my grandkids. And I'm just wondering, like, are we getting it out through the park? I know social media, you guys are great at it and a lot of people are using it, but I can tell you from my experience trying to engage the people in McGregor on social media, it's just not happening. They're just not as active on social media as I would like and so they're not seeing it that way. Is there, do we put it out in the newspaper? Because if we did, I've never seen it. It could have very well been going out, but I'm just wondering, like, are we individually putting these, those wonderful booklets in through the trailer park and through Hidden Creek condominiums?
They receive it if they receive the Free Press.
Yeah.
It's in every single issue of the Free Press and all their distribution. The only ones that we do postal walks to are through Harrow where we deliver them into every mailbox. So, every resident of the Town of Essex receives it and outside of the Town of Essex as well.
Go ahead, Doug.
To your worship, just to add, one of the challenges I know Cynthia has in her report for McGregor, Harrow and Colchester, compared to an Essex center is a gymnasium, pool, so we are limited, for example, what you can offer the McGregor Community Center, and I know if you look at McGregor, seems to be some more adult programs. And Harrow, I know they try and do a good job that we also don't compete and cannibalize some of the other access, for example, right? So, it's that balance, but it's also there are some challenges we have in some different centers.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
8.2 on the agenda, Legal and Legislative Services 2019-25, and this is to set the quarter revision for the Batton Drain. That said report be received, that the quarter revision members be so appointed to convene at 4:30 PM on November 18th, and that Bylaw 1860 receive provisional passage this evening.
Mover please, Counselor Bowman and Counselor Bjorkman. All in favor? Carrie. Thank you.
8.3, Legal and Legislative Services 2019-26, to set the quarter revision for the Philip Ferris Drain. That said report be received, that the quarter revision members be so appointed to convene at 4:30 on November 18th, 2019, and that Bylaw 1861 also receive provisional passage this evening.
Mover please, Deputy Mayor Malash and Counselor Garen. All in favor? Carrie. Thank you.
And 8.4, Legal and Legislative Services 2019-28, also to set the quarter revision for Thompson Drain. That said report be received, that the quarter revision members be so appointed to convene at 5:00 PM on December 2nd, 2019, and that Bylaw 1859 receive provisional passage this evening.
Mover please, Counselor Verbeek and Counselor Bowman. All in favor?
8.5, Legal and Legislative Services 2019-27, and this is in reference to setting the 2020 regular council meeting dates. That said report be received and that the regular meeting dates proposed in this report be approved.
Mover please, Deputy Mayor Malash and Counselor Bjorkman. All in favor?
8.6, Planning Report 2019-46, Re-Heritage Listings. That said report be received and that the properties identified in said report be listed on the Heritage Register pursuant to the Ontario Heritage Act.
Mover please, Counselor Bjorkman. Seconder? Counselor Bowman. All in favor?
8.7 on this evening's agenda is Planning 2019-51, Re-Site Plan Control Approval, 1530343 Ontario Incorporated, at the location of 9529 Walker Road in McGregor. This is also together with Bylaw 1858 to allow for the entering into of a site plan agreement. That said report be received and that Bylaw 1858 receive three readings this evening.
Mover please, Deputy Mayor Malash and Counselor Bowman. All in favor? Carrie.
8.8 is Planning 2019-16, Kimball State's Part-Lot Control Exemption Request, and this is together with Bylaw 1801 to provide that part-lot control shall not apply to certain lands within registered plan 12M542 in the Kimball State subdivision. That said report be received and that Bylaw 1801 receive three readings this evening.
Mover please. Have a mover on this one? Counselor Garen and Counselor Vanadola. All in favor? Carrie.
Item nine on the agenda, Reports from Youth Members. Any reports from our youth member this evening?
Counselor Susie?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Item 10, Any County Council Updates This Evening?
Deputy Mayor Malash?
Thank you, through your worship. Not going to go through the reports themselves, but there are several interesting reports that we're going to be discussing on Wednesday night. It may be worthwhile for Town Council to take a look at master plan for EMS for the next 10 years for the region. Another one is something that just cropped up in conversations in social media this week about vacant tax, property tax, vacant building property taxes. We're going to be reviewing some of the, this year's tax rates and I'm sure that they'll be passing those along to Town of Essex once they're discussed in the past at County Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Malash.
11.1 on the agenda, Correspondence to Be Received. That all of the correspondence listed in 11.1 be received on consent?
Do you have a mover, please? Mover, Counselor Vanadola and Counselor Bowman. Any questions on any of these? Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On our agenda, there is another letter from a Harrow business owner about hydro interruptions and hydro flickers, and this time it's subway, and there's been close to $2,000 in damage with that. So, and we did have another power outage in Harrow. I'm not sure if it went into Colchester this past weekend. It was one side of Arthur Street in Harrow, it was kind of odd, and I did get two emails from people talking about damages. I sent that on to council. And I did bring up a list of concerns at the last board meeting and we just want to keep reiterating, when hydro flickers go out, if your provider's Hydro One, call Hydro One. If your provider's Elk, call Elk. And I do know that our board is listening, our, you know, our mayor's been meeting and our Chair of Elk and Vice Chair were meeting with Elk today, so we are taking it seriously and we'll update when we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. The problem here is when there is an outage in the Town of Harrow or in the area, a lot of public doesn't understand it's from Hydro One. So, but if there is an outage, but please, please phone in to Elk and they will get to the bottom and they'll direct it in the right direction, so.
All in favor?
Item 12, that the committee meeting minutes listed in Agenda Item 12, together with any recommendations noted, be received, approved and adopted as circulated.
Mover please, Counselor Garen and seconder, Counselor Bowman. All in favor?
Under Item 15, Notices of Motion, the following notice or motion was first presented at the October 21st regular council meeting and is now being brought for consideration this evening. As moved by Counselor Bondi, that council send a letter requesting the Alcohol and Gaming Commission of Ontario to consider exemptions from or simplification of the lottery licensing process and would need a seconder.
Need a seconder, please. Deputy Mayor Malash, would you like to speak on this or just straightforward?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. It is pretty straightforward and I was actually going to remove it because I have talked to staff and I also don't really feel that we'll be able to change the province's mind. So, I mean, getting a lot of municipal support behind this, I think, is a moot point and I do think that we can work in-house on making lottery licenses more accessible in the future for some of our residents.
Counselor, would you like to remove this? Okay, so we'll...
Item 16, Any Reports and Announcements From Council Members This Evening?
Deputy Mayor Malash? Counselor Garen? Counselor Verbeek? Counselor Bjorkman?
Thank you, worship. I'm sure it'll come up from the chair, but Monday, November 11th being Remembrance Day, the two different parades and remembrances in the town, so I'll just mention in Harrow, it's at 1:15 PM at the Senate half to 2:45 to come out and show your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bondi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to point out that the council met today at 5 o'clock and we started discussing our Streetscape program, which it's all online on today's date. You can pull it up. We had a 5 o'clock meeting and we did, we gave direction for town staff to, you know, we received the report and that we're moving ahead, looking for a funding strategy and at that point we'll come back and debate it. I also want to just say that after the police, the OPP have left, I think that this council and this administration need to give a little prompt after, they had a lot of good comments, you know, where they're talking about victim-focused, evidence-based. It's been 13 months since the Town of Essex has initiated the election investigation and I think that we should start to apply pressure to them so that they can close their books on that, whatever it may be. The former CAO, Donald... The former CIO, Donna Hunter, sent us an email in March saying that investigation should be wrapped up in a month and a half. Well, that's seven months ago. So I want, like, rip off the Band-Aid and I will be emailing our new OPP contacts with some information as well.
Counselor Vanndel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to report for those residents from Concession 3 and 4 who contacted us over the past couple of weeks about the detour from County Road 20 to the bridge deck being repaired. Some of you already know that we did take, we did ask the OPP to take some action and they did. There's been some more enforcement, there's been some new signage. And within the past 48 hours, I've had more reports from residents saying that the action taken has worked mostly. It's still a little bit of a Wild West there. For the viewers who don't know, this 20's been detoured onto County Road 18, but you can't make everybody take that detour. A lot of them are taking County Road 3 and they're doing about 105, you know, really booking it down that wavy little road and it's scaring the bejesus out of some of the residents. So anyway, it's only four weeks to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Bowman?
Nothing this evening.
I just have the one thing and Counselor Bjorkman already hit on that. It's, as a public, we should never forget the sacrifices that happened in our World War I, World War II and Vietnam, all our wars. And make sure, make sure that we go out Monday and really give thanks to, you know, there's a lot of young men and women that sacrificed their lives for our freedoms. So please go out Monday.
Under item 17 of the agenda, Bylaws. Bylaw 1864 to confirm the proceedings from the October 21st, 2019 regular council meeting for third reading this evening.
Have a mover please, Counselor Bowman and Deputy Mayor Malash. All in favor?
Bylaw 1865 to enter into an agreement with John Mayhew to perform the duties as superintendent and caretaker for the AME Cemetery in War II for two readings this evening.
Mover please, Counselor Garen and Counselor Bjorkman. All in favor? Carrie.
And bylaw 1866 to confirm the proceedings of this November 4th, 2019 regular council meeting.
Mover please. Moved by Counselor Bjorkman and Deputy Mayor Malash. All in favor? German please, need mover. Deputy Mayor Malash and Counselor Bjorkman. All in favor? Carrie.